June 15, 2017. We're opening the meeting that ended on June 5, 2017. It is now 7:30 and we have 100 parties present, voters present for a quorum to met. The tellers have been sworn, the warrant having been previously declared noticed and with constable return of service. And as dictated, we waive the reading of the warrant. Rules of the meetings, ladies and gentlemen. Town meeting is run per town meeting time as the Kingston bylaws dictate. If you wish to address town meeting, raise your hand or step to a microphone, wait to be recognized, then step up to the microphone, state your name and your address. During debates on article, keep your comments focused on the articles and do not make things personal. Let's remember to respect each other and only one person can speak at a time. If you have a point of order, you can shout out "point of order." If you're going to raise a question about is the speaker entitled to the floor, is what the speaker is saying or proposing irrelevant, illegal, frivolous, or contrary to procedure? Is any pending action frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to procedure? These are not debated, they're not seconded, debated, amended, or reconsidered. It's moderator's sole discretion. Question of privilege, if you're raising an issue regarding your rights in privilege of the meeting. Safety, dignity, integrity, volume, temperature, noise, interference with ability to hear, speak, or participate. There has been discussion, as you all know, that people have felt intimidated at the meeting, so let's remember, every voter has that right because remember, it's the good old United States of America. So please remember that each voter has the right to vote as they choose. Do not confront them, do not approach anyone who's voted, and please do not make any comments to any voters. Thank you. Motion to amend, if you want to make a motion to amend, we'll have to have you reduce it to writing. And we usually say it can't be debated, but it usually is debated as you're writing it. Motion to reconsider is pursuant to Kingston bylaws. It must be made at this, which we're hoping is tonight, final adjourned session of the article is voted, or we'll let that session or in writing at the town clerks, but if the meeting is adjourned tonight, Sunday, meaning it's over, then it would be, have to be done tonight. If you want to call the question, you feel debate has gone on enough, please step to the microphone. Remember, you cannot debate, you need to only move to call the question. I want to remind everybody again, fire regulations require, don't I look like a airline student now? Fire regulations require that the doors be left open and that we're asking that everybody be seated and not be near the doors. And that's it. I have one other thing that I want to approach. I've been approached many times about limiting people speaking. As you know, I started at this town meeting, limiting people to, only twice at the microphone. I'm going to actually take a vote. We're not going to debate it, I'm just going to ask a question. People have raised an issue of limiting people speaking to two minutes, so I'm going to put it right out there. How many people support, Tom, speakers being limited to two minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
All those would rather not limit it to two minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Then it's two minutes, folks. I'm going to go by the vote of the meeting, we're going to see how it works out, and then, as you all know, it's still moderator's discretion, but I'm going to go with that. So now I have to find my time clock. Can you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we left off at Article 56.
Want to work?
Yes. 56? Yes.
Is it still two times to the microphone, or one time, two minutes, and that's it?
It's, I'm going to, it should be one time, but I'm going to keep it up to, the second time up would be 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
And sometimes that has to do with more of, people are upset that somebody said something that isn't quite right, or whatever, and that's why I allow second to the microphone. So just everybody understands why I'm saying that. And that rule applies to everyone, and then, just so everybody knows, it applies to our boards as well. All right, so Article 56, we have this, and this is planning board, so is, Susan, did I see you out there? Oh, Tom, you're moving it? Okay. So Mr. Bouchard, if you can do that, town council is timing. I will say that presenters are usually always traditionally given longer time, so, and that's just always been historic in any town meeting, so we will watch the time on presenters, too.
What, where do we get, 30 minutes?
It would be five, but I'm hoping we can limit talk tonight.
Okay.
So if you can start that off, Mr. Bouchard.
Move that the town vote to accept McFarland Drive, Rigdale Drive, Jaclyn Lane, and Erica Lane as public ways, and to authorize the selectmen to accept or take via eminent domain suitable fees or easements in said ways as printed in the warrant.
Well, wait a minute, we're going to do a friendly amendment. Did you, I think, Tom, were you aware that they presented?
You had the previous one, Tommy.
Yeah. They gave us a new one.
Take this one, Tommy.
So...
I have it sitting on the floor back there.
Yeah. So if you can read that one, because it's just changing around to make, so it's a portion of McFarland Drive. Did you see the motion in the bold?
Yes. Move that the town vote to accept Rigdale Drive, Jaclyn Lane, Erica Lane, and a portion of McFarland Drive as public ways, and to authorize the selectmen to accept or take via eminent domain suitable fees or easements in said ways as presented in the warrant.
So having a second on that, and that would be friendly amendment printed in the warrant, so that being seconded, and Mr. Bouchard, are you going to address this article, or is Mr. Bott?
I am, I'll address this immediately.
Certainly. Mr. Bott? If you can address Article, I mean, Motion 56.
Yes ma'am. Thank you, Madam Moderator. McFarland Farms has two phases, phase one and phase two. In this instance, we have, we've accepted a portion of phase one at the last meeting, a portion of the streets that had previously been accepted, but this is essentially phase one B, the second part of McFarland Farms, never accepted by the town, and in need of repair. The developer has been unresponsive for over a decade. Mr. Fishman of Yew, Colorado, based on the recommendation of the highway commissioner or the highway superintendent who is not here this evening, we worked together to get the street acceptance packages put together to get these streets accepted. They will be, have to be done by eminent domain, which will require a two-thirds vote. So the streets are in deteriorating, we need to fix them before they're worse, and perhaps create some sort of safety hazard, not that there are any safety hazards at this point, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Yes, ma'am?
Jean Coleman, 20 Howlands Lane, two questions, please. I'm just wondering if we have a price point for repairing the roads once we do take, I guess, possession of them? And secondly, why these articles are not in succession, that we know which streets or with which neighborhoods? If that makes any sense?
No. What do you mean by that? What's not succession?
We voted on McLaren Farms in another article, an earlier article, and I'm just wondering why these articles are bounced around and they're not in succession so that the voters understand which roads that we're voting on.
What happens is, one was phase one, and another one's, I think this is, is this phase two still, or is this phase one?
This is phase one.
This is still phase one. So what ends up happening is, sometimes it depends on when they've come in, but the Board of Selectmen sets the warrant articles, so they put them in the order they want them heard in.
Okay, is there a reason, though, that they're bouncing, like, out of order for what we're asking, I guess? Because if I'm not mistaken, the rest of these articles that we're dealing with tonight are all about accepting roads?
Well, no.
And I think it's just, or many, many of them are, and I think it's just fair that we can address all of the questions about them at once so that we're not here all night.
Yep, does make sense. I understand what you're saying, and I think the Board of Selectmen hears you, and will report that back to their town administrator. Mr. Fons?
John Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue.
Oh, wait a minute, we didn't answer your question, Ms. Coleman.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fons, one second.
That's okay.
Mr. Bott, she asked about when they can expect repairs, right? After it's accepted?
There are no plans, immediate plans, for repair. These things take time with Chapter 90 money and get a consultant out there, so we don't have a dollar figure on what we're going to be repairing, or when we're going to be repairing them. Because we can't proceed with that until the streets are accepted. So I don't have a dollar number of what it's going to cost to accept, to have these repairs done. We just know that they're not getting any better, and at some point, we're going to have to fix them, and it could be more expensive.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Mr. Fons?
Yes, I would encourage the voters not to support this for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's my understanding that a project like this, when it was done, there's supposed to be somewhat of a deposit, I guess, from the builder that's given to the town to ensure that the project is done and completed correctly. It's also my understanding that that deposit is not supposed to be returned to the builder until the town has verified that the job is actually completed the way it was proposed. I understand that the builder is no longer responsive at this point, but I'd like to know what happened with that deposit, and the reasons why whatever happened, did happen. That's one question. The other issue is that I would urge you not to support this, because if we don't even know what the cost is, I don't believe that we should be approving something if we don't know what it's going to eventually end up costing us altogether in the long run. But if you could please answer the question as to what happened with that deposit?
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Bott, can you address the deposit? Was one paid at the time?
Yes.
When the plan started, and then was it ever released?
There are about $17,000 left in the bond amount. That bond amount at that time was for the punch list items from 1994. So in 1994, when the roads were originally completed and the developer was moving forward with accepting the roads, the bond amount was down to that amount. Because if someone comes in and says, "I'd like part of my bond release because I've gotten this work done," under the state law, the town has 45 days to tell the developer, "You can have your money back, or you have to complete these repairs." In 1994, and this is before my time, but from going back and looking at the records, it seemed as though the roads were in good shape at that point, and they just deteriorated over, what is, 1994, 25 years of no maintenance.
So is the answer that the $17,000 was released?
No, we still have the $17,000.
Okay.
Yes, we still have $17,000.
And what will happen, if I may ask the next question, which is, what would happen if we accept the roads? Is the $17,000 released, or does it go to the town?
No, that's still ours, we would keep that to help offset some of the repair cost.
Okay.
If I may just ask a follow-up question, very briefly.
Yep, you still have like 30 seconds, so go ahead.
Okay.
You're doing good, though, you were talking fast.
Was the road ever paved at all initially, or has it never been paved?
This phase of McFarland Farms has not been phased, paved before. The phase we did the other night, 1A was paved, 1B is not paved because it's private, and we can't pave it because it's private.
Okay. With all due respect, I would say calling it a repair is a little misleading if it's never been paved. And I would question why we gave any money back if the road was never paved. You're saying that the developer said that, that, you're saying that in 94, someone decided that the roads were in good shape, but they weren't paved?
Oh, excuse me, I misunderstood. No, the developer paved the road, the town has never paved the roads. The town has gone back and paved 1A, but not 1B because 1B has never been owned by the town.
Okay, so just to clarify, they've been paved, but paved, but not by the town?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Because we didn't own them.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Any further debate? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bouchard?
I'd like to make this real clear. Tom made it very clear, but I want to speak one more time about this. These roads were done up to standard, other than minor punch list little items way back when. So if we had accepted them, if he had followed through and accepted those and gotten his $17,000 back, the roads would be ours right now, just the way they are, just what we're proposing, that the roads would be ours and we would take care of them. If that had happened, when it should have back then, we would be taking care of these roads all this time anyway. So it's very important that we accept these streets. The developer didn't shortcut, he didn't do things wrong, he did things according to the standard, according to the rules and regulations, but he just never followed through with the final step of accepting. So if he, if we had accepted these all those years ago, we would be repairing these today anyway. So it really doesn't make any difference. It's real important for the neighborhood that we accept these streets, get them on the list of what we're going to be doing and not doing, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howlands Lane. To Mr. Bouchard's points, and I do appreciate what he's saying that it was done to standards, again, that was 25 years ago, and the town never accepted them, so the cost for us right now may be way more significant than if we had properly accepted them in 94 and had been doing the maintenance on that, the ongoing maintenance, as opposed to them being in the disrepair that they are in right now, and the cost that may be associated with, or the larger costs that may be associated with actually fully refurbishing those roads, as opposed to saying, doing routine maintenance on, on a yearly basis, or bi-yearly. I mean, 25 years is a long time to, to take a road and try to bring it back to, to the full standard that the builder had left. So, again, I would recommend that the town not support this article on the simple notion that we don't know the cost of it, and it's very important that we know the cost before, I think, we go forward. And I do understand that, to the citizens of that neighborhood, I do apologize for taking that stance, but again, I do think that it's very important that we know costs before we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Make a motion to move the question.
We have a move the question, seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now moving Article 56. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm just going to count it because it's a two-thirds, it's required a two-thirds vote. So if my tellers can come forward. Thank you. All those in favor of Article 56, cod in the air. Thank you.
30.
Ms. Murray is 30. Mr. Pepe?
19.
Mr. Pepe is 19. Mr. Ruprek?
17.
Mr. Ruprek is 17. All those opposed? Pink cod near, please.
1.
Ms. Murray is 1. Mr. Pepe?
3.
Mr. Pepe is 3. Mr. Ruprek?
11.
Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries on a two-thirds vote with, sorry, with 66 in favor and 15 in opposition. Moving on to Article 57, Mr. Langenbach.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Gary Langenbach, 164 Elm Street, member of the Conservation Commission. Move to amend the town of Kingston general bylaws, Chapter 7, Public Ways and Places, Section 7-1-6, discharge of firearms on public way as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Langenbach. Do I have a second?
Second.
That being seconded, Mr. Langenbach, can you approach your, I mean, address your article?
If I may, Madam Moderator, I'd like to speak to the issue. This has to do with the discharge of firearms on a public way. When the origin, this is an amendment to the general bylaw. It already exists, but it omits talking about Conservation Commission properties. No person shall fire or discharge any gun, pistol, or other firearms in or across any streets or public places within the town. But this section shall not apply to the use of such weapons in the lawful defense of one's person, family, or property, or in performance of any duty required, authorized by law, nor upon such days as may be designated by the Board of Selectmen, or for hunting conducted in accordance with all applicable laws and regulations upon property under the care and control of the Conservation Commission where hunting is not prohibited. Let me just emphasize, this doesn't mean that you can't hunt on all conservation properties. The commission basically, and I'll list them if you want, but for brevity, unless somebody wants, the larger properties allow for hunting. The smaller properties, or ones that are close to a lot of housing, do not. This basically came to our attention through a complaint filed by someone who had or could hear a tremendous amount of target shooting on a conservation property. It went on through all hours of the night, and it isn't just like hunting where you hear a couple gunshots during hunting season. This happened all the time, mostly on weekends, but thousands of shots. And so we want to try to enforce, and we're working on it with the power company, trying to enforce the no target shooting on public property. So that's what this is all about, it's just an addition. And I urge you to support the article.
Thank you, Mr. Langenbach. Mr. Harlow?
Corland Harlow, 31 Howlands Lane. I oppose this. I look at this as conservation by confiscation and abandonment, as opposed to confiscation by participation and involvement. Some people like to go out and shoot, and I think it's a great thing to do if it's on conservation land, your own personal property, wherever it may be. So people like to go out and enjoy the outdoors, different manners. Some people like doing it via shooting, so I don't want to see that taken away to those who enjoy shooting, target shooting outside on public conservation land. In addition, I don't see the purpose if it's with regard to sound. My understanding, in Massachusetts, you're not allowed to shoot on Sundays unless it's your own private property, so that's that. Then in addition, I've been out to numerous conservation areas and woods and so forth, and hear helicopters and planes fly over by, as well as motorcycles and other vehicles. And that being said, I don't think that that should be prohibited. And lastly, I see that our Second Amendment rights are under assault specifically in Massachusetts, and I don't want to see our rights being taken away or diminished by the people voting to have no shooting of guns on public conservation lands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Mr. Fons?
John Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue. I would not support this based on the simple fact that I believe we have sufficient laws on a state level in terms of, first of all, how close you can be to a residential area discharging a firearm. So to me, this is something that the local police could very easily handle. If someone is too close to a home, close enough that people living in the home have complaints about the sounds of the gunshots, they could very easily call the police, the police could come down and certainly verify, you know, if the folks are too close or not, and deal with it in that fashion. So I think that this law would be basically overlapping laws which we already have, which basically makes it unnecessary. I also would be very interested to hear from the person that had this complaint. I think it would be interesting to hear their side of the story in terms of supporting this. And I also do not find it necessarily credible that someone was target shooting at nighttime. I think it would be probably pretty hard to hit their target in the dark. That seems really strange to me. So I don't really find credibility in that complaint, so I would urge folks not to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howlands Lane. Madam Moderator, just a quick question. Why is there no quorum required to change this particular bylaw? Are there other, it says no quorum required, and it's in a majority vote. I don't know about the majority versus two-thirds, but I thought bylaws require quorums, and I'm not saying we don't have a quorum, I'm just asking.
Yep. And town council will answer that.
The quorum is established in your bylaws to be 100 persons for financial matters, indebtedness, and zoning bylaws, and this is a general bylaw, so it doesn't fall under that list of categories. So a general bylaw does not require a quorum.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I did have further questions, if that's okay, Madam Moderator?
Yep, keep going.
Okay. So just speaking to the, to the point, I believe there is a 500-foot setback from all property lines and 150-foot from certain roadways, but to Mr. Langenbach, what, isn't there one property in particular that this, this is affecting on the conservation list of properties that you can no longer shoot on, essentially? Because most of the properties in town are too small to fire because they don't meet the setbacks. So is it, if I'm not mistaken, Tree Farm, something? I don't know the full conservation.
So Mr. Langenbach, are you aware on the bylaw change of which parcels in town this will impact? If you don't know, you don't know, I'll ask Mr. Bott.
All of them, really, but hunting, hunting isn't affected on certain properties. I'll read the properties if you'd like, that it is not allowed on, or...
No, 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 Mr. Langenbach, what he's asking is, what will this bylaw change? How many parcels of conservation land will be impacted by this bylaw change?
It basically is already a bylaw for the town.
What is already a bylaw for the town?
Just an amendment.
I know, the amendment, which...
No discharge of firearms.
The amendment is going to impact how many parcels of ConCom, conservation land, sorry?
I'm counting them. Eight.
Eight? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Langenbach.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I did just have one further comment with regard to the change. In 2008, according to this news article from the Barnstable Patriot, Robert O'Connor, Director of the State Division of Conservation Services, had stated that, that target practice is actually a passive recreation under state law, and supported by conservation. So to put into effect a law that would impact passive target shooting or passive recreation, I think diminishes the purpose of having the conservation land in the first place, because this is one of the things that the state actually supports. And so for that purpose, I would actually suggest to the town not support the amendment, because it actually goes in contradiction to a 2008 letter written by...
Oh, shoot, I know.
The Commissioner O'Connor.
He asked a question, I'm timing, you people are not timing. I'm going to make that really clear, because we're stopping when somebody else talks, and we're, and I'm going when county council clocks, so we're keeping a separate time. Now, the time hasn't stopped, so I've lost some time. So Mr. Harlow, wrap it up.
Yep, that was it.
Thank you.
The Director of State Division of Conservation Services says it would be bad.
Thank you. Mr. Ruprek?
Mike Ruprek, 236 Main Street. My brother-in-law was the person that got this ball rolling. He lived on Clearing Farm Road. If you were up there on a Sunday afternoon...
Can't hear you, speak up into the mic.
If you were up there on a Sunday afternoon, you'd think you're in a war zone. If you walk out back there, there are shotgun shells, there are, there are bottles, cans, skeet, clay skeet, the place is a mess. If that's the way, I'm not trying to take away anyone's Second Amendment rights, I'm a shooter. But if this is the way people are going to go, and not take care of conservation land, then they shouldn't be allowed to use it for what they're using it for. It doesn't matter if it's a Sunday. The police have been called, I'll bet a dozen times. Sundays, you're not supposed to shoot. Sunday is one of the biggest days that it happens up there. I'm up there all the time. It does happen. It is threatening the life and limb up there if you're in your backyard. You can stand and go from his backyard and look out over the high tension lines with this all happening. It's not safe, it's not right that they don't clean up after themselves. You ask any responsible hunter, or marksmen, or shooter, they'll pick up their rounds, they'll clean up their mess. These people are not responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Ruprek. I can't even see you, you're in the haze, you're in the dead zone there.
Hi, I'm Mike Reeves, and I'm Rob's neighbor, I live on Clearing Farm. And for the person who said he didn't know how you could do target practice...
You can't, you have to speak into the mic, or people can't hear.
For the person who said he didn't know how you can do target practice at night, I can assure you, you cannot do target practice at night, but there is shooting. So there you have it. And I am a responsible shooter, and you clean up your brass when you leave. You don't leave your brass out there. And the other thing is, is that's within a very short distance of a housing development where there are kids playing. Just one mistake, this is unsupervised shooting that's going on. One mistake, and somebody could be hurt badly. And so that's the reason that this was brought forward, is, is to make it safer in our neighborhood. It's not a matter of infringing on people's rights. If I want to shoot, I go to the range, where there are supervisors that, that can ensure that I am properly, safely operating the firearm. When there's nobody there, and you're near a neighborhood, and you're firing 223s, 308s, pistol rounds, you know, if you don't know, you know, 600, 600 feet is not a long way. So I just want to point that out, that this is very near a neighborhood. It may be just outside that limit, but it's very near a neighborhood on at least two sides, and that's, that's the reason that this was brought forward. And there is plenty of shooting going on on Sunday, not just Saturday, but Sunday, and it does go on at night as well.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Randall?
Yeah, Bradford Randall, 39 Winter Street. Just called a question.
Mr. Randall's calling the question. He's moving the question. Do I have a second? All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, voting on Article 57, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on to Article 58. Board of Selectmen? No, 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 no. I'm sorry, I didn't even read that on the last two. I do apologize. I didn't read those. This is to be moved by the Board of Selectmen? Is anybody going? It's the shortest motion, in case nobody's prepared.
Moved that the town accepted easement across 87 Pondview as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? I have a second on that. Ms. Fiori, do you want to address it, or?
I'll let Mr. Bott.
Or is Mr. Bott going to?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bott, if you can address the motion on Article 58. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, 87 Pondview is the one address I know in Indian Pond Estates. It's where Rabith Road goes across, out of the development and into the woods. When the gentleman bought 87 Pondview, the cart path, Rabith Road, went through the middle of his property. Through a number of legal actions, they have agreed to relocate the cart path to the side of the property and give rights to cross this easement. So, this easement is essentially moving the cart path, known as Rabith Road, to the edge of the property in an area that's already been prepared, and this is asking the town to accept that easement, so the road doesn't go through the middle of their yard anymore. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Yes, Ms.?
Coleman.
Coleman, sorry.
20 Howlands Lane. One of my friends lives right next door. Which side of the property is this affecting? I just, I know that he says that there are constantly teenagers up that road right now, and I know that police do have a difficult time getting there, and I think that's one of the issues with this road. Is that correct?
Well, Rabith Road is a bumpy, bumpy road.
Right.
To get all the way through. So, this is about just moving that location. So, if you're looking at 87 Pondview.
Yep.
The easement has been moved from the middle of their yard over to the far left. So, it's right up against the white stockade fence.
Is it going to increase traffic next to their house, or is it just to regulate the road?
It's just to move the easement from one side to the other.
Yes, sir?
Yes, my name's Jay Irving. The property question is my yard. I'm at 87 Pondview Drive. I lived there with my wife Sheila, my son Spencer, and my daughter Skylah. When we moved into the neighborhood 17 years ago, the cart path was exactly where it was right now. So, we're not changing, moving, doing anything differently. On paper, like Mr. Bott said, it was a little closer to the middle of our property. People have been using the path right where it is now for the past 17 years. And again, the middle of my property is where my kids play. We've had engineers survey the property by the expense of me and a couple neighbors and made the improvements, so this will cost the town nothing. And I'm just asking for you all to vote yes to accept the relocation of the cart path. Again, it's still on our property, and we're not expecting anyone to pay anything else, but we've already done that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. So, you're basically saying the cop path is where it is where it is, so we're just changing it on the paper?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Any further debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 58, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 59. Attorney Berger?
Move to rezone the five parcels with assessors, map and lot number 012002000, comma, 012002001, 012002002, 012003000, and 019007000, located in the northern part of Kingston, from industrial to commercial industrial park zoning.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. This is Mike Burns from Fox Ten Road, 24 Fox Ten Road. Motion to?
I don't even have a second yet, so you're out of order for a minute?
I'm sorry.
So, just, yeah, just wait, wait there, one second. Don't go too far. I have a second on that, so now let Mr. Berger address the motion first, and then you're up next. Okay?
A motion to reconsider.
Okay, but does it?
58.
Okay.
I'm sorry I'm late.
No, no, that's okay. But what I'm going to do is this. Because this motion is already on the table, so I have to address this one, and then I'll go to yours, so right after we're done with this article.
Thank you.
We'll go back. And that was which number, 58?
58.
Okay.
The first thing I wanted to just say, the location of these five parcels. If you're on Route 53, going out of Kingston toward Duxbury, on the left-hand side, this is Independence Road. There's a mini storage facility that's right there on the corner. So, if you turn left and go down Independence Road, if you go down Independence Road, it's the five parcels, or excuse me, there are four parcels that are around Independence Road, and there's one parcel that's behind, that's not right on Independence Road. It's behind where it used to be the Kingston Basketball Complex, and then that parcel's also behind what's now, a portion of it's behind the Big Y. The Kingston Business Association communicated with all owners who had, who have land that can be developed. Each of them is aware of the proposed bylaw changes, and it is our understanding that all are in favor of this change, which is designed to benefit the land by expanding the possible development. This area is one of the key gateways to our town, and for years, the properties have been undeveloped or fallow as the current industrial zoning designation allows uses that no one is interested in pursuing. The proposed designation, Commercial Industrial Park, includes numerous community-friendly uses that will encourage development of needed and desirable businesses. The town will benefit in many ways, including new businesses, increased tax revenue, new jobs, and aesthetic improvements of a gateway to the town. Developers are currently following this article anticipation of changes as they are interested in looking at new projects in this area. It's my understanding, I believe that the Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of this.
I'm going to get to those, yep. But you are correct. The Planning Board is favorable 500. Anything further, Mr. Berger?
No, I don't have anything further.
Board of Selectmen was pending?
Favorable 2-1.
Favorable, Board of Selectmen is favorable 2-1. Mr. Fauntz?
Just a quick question. With this new zoning, is there any slightest chance of a possibility that any type of residential units could be put on that property?
No, I believe the answer to that's no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. McKinnon?
In terms of the Board of Selectmen's vote, there were two in favor and one opposed. Could we get an understanding of what the opposition was?
I opposed it, and the reason why I opposed it was the fact that the other parties involved, I am not comfortable that they're all on board with this at this time. That's it.
At time, yes?
Good evening, Doug Dondaro, 14 Copper Beach Drive. I'm just concerned that the vagueness of this, it's almost the Fourth of July. I'm handed something. This is what it is. What's? I don't see the importance of this, of leaving it just the way it is until we get more information. It seems like we're just trying to be pushed right through. Why can't we wait till we have an update to our master plan and look into this? Those are my thoughts and concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Dondaro. I will tell you that this was timely filed at the beginning, has been part of the town articles since the beginning, so.
This looks extremely vague.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, you said, you made it, you implied like you just got it tonight, and I'm saying it's been there since April.
This was handed to me tonight.
Oh, okay, that plan you mean. Okay. I thought you meant the article. You were holding the town meeting book. I was confused that you meant the plan tonight.
Very vague.
Okay.
Madam Moderator, if I may?
So, thank you. One second. I will go back to you, Attorney Berger. Mr. Fauntz?
Again, I would just echo that concern.
And that's your second, so 30 seconds.
Okay, my first was like 10 seconds, but that's fine. I would just echo that concern, not having a very clear idea of what the master plan for this town is due to not really having minutes. I think that's a big concern, and I think it's important for the voters to understand how these changes would fit into the master plan if we had more information in that regard. So, I feel it's a little bit complicated for us to be making these types of decisions without having the bigger image before us to really understand how it all fits in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fauntz. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howlands Lane. I believe that there actually had been a Planning Board meeting in which there was discussions in there. Originally, had been some concern that the property owners hadn't been contacted from some of the property owners. However, my understanding from watching that Planning Board meeting was that, at that point, the zoning, or the ZBA was going to reach out to them. So, you're stating that you have done so completely and had discussions with them?
Madam Moderator, if I may respond?
Yes, you may, Mr. Berger.
Absolutely. The Kingston Board of, the Kingston Business Association, not the ZBA, the Kingston Business Association contacted all of the property owners. It's our understanding that all of the property owners are in favor. This is a provision that takes the limitations. Right now, this property is all zoned industrial. There's existing zoning guidelines. It's industrial. There has not been development. We hear all town meeting that there's not enough revenue. People are looking to raise revenue. We want to bring businesses into this town to raise revenue. We want to change this to commercial industrial. That greatly expands.
Okay, Attorney Berger, you were answering the question, so I'm going to go back to you, but, you know, I want people to just get on it. So, Mr. Harlow, back on you.
That was actually my understanding, that the property owners were in favor of it, for what that's worth. That being said, I did just have one further question. There's one parcel that looks like it's undeveloped currently. What is that parcel currently, and are there future plans that you're aware of for developing that parcel? Just a curiosity question. Thank you.
Attorney Berger, are you aware of any development plans, or?
I am not aware of any concrete development plans, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bouchard, and then I have Ms. McFaulin.
Yeah, Tom Bouchard, 6 Square Run. I'm also on the Planning Board. I'd like to clear this up. In the beginning, this was brought in the hearings to the Planning Board. We had concerns that there were people that, maybe they tried to contact, but didn't get contacted, and in the end, yes, that turned out to be true. So, we invited those people to the hearings, and in the end, all the people that we talked to that were involved in this seemed to have no problem with it. So, in the beginning, that was an issue about people being contacted or having a chance to respond. In the end, it seems that they all seemed to say, well, this doesn't hurt us, it might help us. And I think that this is a good way to get revenue to the town. It just opens up more possibilities. I see no negatives on this from the Planning Board's standpoint of view, and I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Ms. McFaulin?
I voted in favor of this, but I need some clarification. Mr. Berger, you started with, it's my understanding that everyone has agreed to this. And Tom, you just said, all the people we talked to seemed to be okay. I want to know if anybody here can say for sure that every property owner that's listed on this article has been contacted and did say, I'm okay with it.
So, one second, Ms. McFaulin. If I can have Attorney Berger, I believe you represented that every property owner has been contacted?
Yes.
So, the question, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And then the second question is, is every property owner indicated that they are okay with this change?
Yes, I have either heard directly, I have heard indirectly, that every property owner approves this. Have I personally spoken to every property owner? No. It's my understanding that they do approve as this would benefit them.
Thank you. Ms. McFaulin?
Do we have anything in writing from these people?
I'm assuming not. Attorney Berger, do you have this in writing from these people?
I do not have anything in writing.
Okay. Yep, Ms. McFaulin, no writing.
Then I'm sorry, I feel uncomfortable with this. I need to know that these property owners are okay, because when they came to our Board of Selectmen's meeting, they had not been contacted, and they were not okay with this change because they didn't understand it. And until I have something in writing, I'm not going to feel comfortable with this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McFaulin. Come on, folks. I believe I had Mr. Dalton.
Craig Dalton, 11 Elm Street. I just had a question. Were the abutters also notified and queried about their approval on this?
Mr. Berger?
We did not. To my knowledge, I didn't send notice to any of the abutters. The abutters to the property are either commercially zoned, or they're, it's Route 53. The other potential abutter is, I believe it's Kingstown Way, which is the over 55, the modular home park. But there's a significant buffer. There's some maps out here that you can see the exact location of the property. So, there's significantly buffer around it.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Back to you, Mr.? Oh, no, Mr. Dalton, is that it? Thank you. So, I have Mr. Ruprek, and then I go back to Mr. Berger. Yeah, and I have Craig. Yes, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Guittaboni.
Mark Guittaboni, 15 Old Orchard Lane. I'm the president of Boy and Girl Scouts of Kingston, Inc. We're one of the property owners. We were notified by letter and 100% in favor of the options that'll be available for this neighborhood. Currently, this property is fallow for the most part and unsightly. These initiatives by the Kingston Business Association to make this property something that will generate tax revenue is a total win for the town of Kingston and for the neighbors and every one of the members that were contacted, and I met several of them at the Planning Board, were in favor of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Guittaboni. I had, back to Mr. Berger, and then Mr. Pike. Did you want? You don't? Okay. Then Mr. Pike? And then back to Mr. Haas.
Carl Pike, Shore Drive. I'd just like to say that I, for one, am in favor of this. My understanding is that we're looking to make a zoning change from industrial to commercial slash industrial. Any project that might come up to go in there would go through all of the required meetings, all of the approvals, the planning, the getting together. So, one more time, I would encourage people to support something that would have a chance to bring some businesses in here, that would help us all have reduced residential taxes. I think that I've hear too many times that we need more non-residential tax base in this town, and every time I see something come up, I have people that find 14 reasons why we shouldn't even consider it. Well, all we're trying to do is ask for a zoning change that might make opportunities for other businesses to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Come on, Mr. Haas?
Yeah, to clarify, John Haas, 96 Summer Street. I am also a member of the KBA. The property owners, there are five of them, and I'll just put it out there. Freeman Boynton is one of them, was notified, provided us a conversation and an email in favor. Jim Rader, property owner, came to the Planning Board meeting in favor. The Boy Scouts you just heard from. There are two other people. Both of them have completely developed properties. The Self Store, which are located in, I believe, Texas, we wrote them a letter, never heard from them. The other party is the medical facility, wrote a letter to them. Everybody got a letter. Everybody got a letter. We never heard from them. We made attempts to get ahold of both of these parties. Both of those parcels are developed. So what we're talking about here is the remaining part. We did that at the request and the recommendation of the zoning enforcement officer, who said that it would be reasonable to do it with all five of these properties because they are all zoned industrial, and to do it in some sort of other fashion would obviously look like some sort of selective zoning. So that's why it was done the way it was done. And all those parties were notified. The people with undeveloped land or redevelopable land, all are in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Sir?
Mike Fernette, 54 Grocery. Move the question.
Did you get his name? Okay. Mr. Fernette, move this question. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Article 59, which is going to require a two-third vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. On a two-third vote, voice vote. I'm sorry, two-third voice vote. Now, we're going back to the motion to reconsider, and thank you, sir. And I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Mike Burns, 24 Fox Den Road.
Burns, okay. So, Mr. Burns, we have the motion to reconsider. Actually, I'm going to go back, one second. And that was Article 58. So I got a second on that, ladies and gentlemen?
Second.
Got a second? So, ladies and gentlemen, to reconsider again, if you want to open up debate on Article 58, then you want to vote yes to reconsider and re-debate it, and a no vote ends it forever. So, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of reconsideration to debate further, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Now, moving on to...
Madam Moderator, can we reconsider Article 59?
Reconsider Article 59. That's Mr. Guittaboni.
Thank you.
Motion to reconsider. I have a second on that. Again, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to reopen and debate Article 59 again, say aye. If you want to close it forever, say no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Moving on to Article 60. Attorney Berger?
Move that the town of Kingston zoning bylaws be amended to add under 4.8.4. Uses allowed on a special permit granted by the Board of Appeals. New paragraph 4.8.4.9. Residential mixed use with residential up to 50% of the total square footage of floor space on site.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
And ladies and gentlemen, just to explain, the differences that occurred was because Town Council wanted it to be specified so it would fall right into our correct zoning bylaws, just so make sure that everybody understands, and to clarify the 50%. I just want to confirm, Board of Selectmen, vote on that?
Debate.
And then, Planning Board, Tom, can you, I believe that was a 500 favorable to the proposed changes?
Well, not quite.
Okay, then we'll go back to that. Mr. Berger, you want to address your motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator. The purpose of this motion, first of all, this only applies to commercial districts. We just voted to rezone a portion of the town from industrial to commercial industrial park. This does not apply to that district. This applies to just commercial district. And I believe, and there's probably other people who can speak better at this than me, but it applies to the areas going down like Route 3A. What this would allow is it would allow residential in, if there's a commercial on the first floor and there's second floor space, you can have up to 50% of the floor space of the building can be used for residential. What we believe this will do is it will make some of these commercial buildings more valuable. It will also help with the housing shortage, and in particular, it's probably going to help with housing in the smaller units. So it's maybe a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit. So it's not the kind of living space that would put a lot of school or a lot of children in the schools. So the purpose of this, again, is to try to make some commercial property a little bit more economical for the owner. That would allow them to pay taxes more easily, and then it provides some address to some of the housing shortages that we have, in particular with respect to the one-bedroom units. And if I may address just the issue with respect to the planning board?
Well, actually, let me just explain then. I'm going to read you the vote from the planning board, just to be clear from their report. The planning board was not in favor of this petition article submitted. However, they took a motion that they were in favor for 500, but that motion was if it was changed from the zoning board of appeals to the planning board with the 50% square footage defined, which has been now defined. But we were unable to make that change. The petition article wanted to make it planning board, but just so everybody understands, as moderator, I have declined that because the notice in the article was that it would be under the zoning board of appeals control, and that's what the citizens were notified of, not the planning board. So I've just said that that's outside the scope of the four corners of the article so that it can't be changed to the planning board. So I just want to make sure that that was understood by everybody because we've been dealing with that. So, Mr. Berger, now, if you want to address that, how those results came about?
Yeah, so we originally had tried to comply with the request of the planning board. It was deemed to be outside of the scope. I just want to emphasize that even though the permit granting authority would be the zoning board of appeals, there would be site plan review by the planning board. So the planning board would have input on this. And this is not automatic. Nobody has the ability to do this as of right. Nobody can put residential property, or excuse me, residential in this commercial property as of right. They have to go to the zoning board of appeals, and they have to get approval from the zoning board of appeals. Abutters would all be notified, and the abutters could go in and they could voice their concerns, and it would be up to the zoning board of appeals to determine if the residential use should be allowed. And then, at that point, the planning board would also have to approve the site plan to make sure that issues like parking are adequately addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Bouchard?
Tom Bouchard, 6 Square Run, also chairman of the planning board. I'd like to just say that I think that this article has some merit. There's a need for one, two-bedroom. There's a need for some of this. I just don't think we have a handle on this yet. I also think, I also would like to say, we just passed, we just passed an article the other night for $90,000 to redo the zoning, and this is something that we would address in there and address it really in a clean way. When I say in a clean way, think about an apartment over a commercial unit. Well, it might go through a planning review, then go through the zoning board of appeals. But what happens when a different tenant moves into the commercial use and they have different chemicals that they're using and things of this nature? You know what I'm saying? There's a lot to think about when you're talking about having a business and having residents above it. And I think we really need to think this one through. I think we're going to be paying someone to help us do this. And although I think this article has merit, and I told Mr. Berger that as well, I think we should hold off on this and wait till we redo the zoning, and then I think we can really address it in a real complete way, rather than doing something that we're going to regret later and then kind of come back and erase. I think it's time to do this in the next year or so, and there's no rush. It's not like it's an urgent thing. I would just urge you to not think it's a bad idea, but to put it off and vote no this time until we complete it and get it done in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. Two questions. First one is, how would it impact commercial properties that are on the sewer line in terms of where there's no capacity or there's a waiting list for capacity? How would that be impacted? Would the sewer commission have to take a vote on those properties that are on sewer that would be a commercial that they'd want to mix use on? That's the first question.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Can you hold? Ms. Fiore from Sewer, can you address that, please?
It would be no different than anything else, depending on what, how much capacity the particular lot would have and what they wanted to have the use on that particular building be. It would go by Title V. So each property would be taken on an individual basis based on how much capacity they had. Some may work, some may not.
Thank you. Ms. Fiore, back on, Mr. Harlow. Back to your second question.
Second question is, if there was a property that was a commercial that already had a mixed use that wasn't, other than allowable mixed use, how would that be impacted by this bylaw change passing? Thank you.
Can you address that? I'm going to have Town Council address that for Mr. Harlow.
So naturally, an existing use...
So you have to go closer.
Oh, am I here?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Naturally, an existing use may or may not have grandfather protection. It's fact-specific, but generally, existing uses aren't affected by bylaw changes provided they're not abandoned or not used for that for a certain specified period of time.
Thank you. Mr. Fons?
Joe Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue. I would very much like to support this. I'm all for giving business owners more flexibility with what they can do with their properties to make their businesses more viable. However, I think that as a town, we have to seriously consider and be wary of increasing the amount of residential properties in town. And in particular, we have to have concern about properties that tend to be one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartments, because these tend to be the types of properties that tend to encourage more transient residents. In other words, people who move in, maybe are there for a couple months or a year or two, and then they move out. And as we know, that can be extremely volatile to our education budget because, you know, we heard comments that, you know, perhaps, oh, you know, these aren't the types of residences that are going to be conducive of children. But the bottom line is, you know, you can't control who lives in an apartment and how many people live in an apartment. So it's perfectly viable to consider that there may be many children coming in and out of properties such as these, and we have to be very cognizant, in my opinion, of our education budget in terms of the possibility of perhaps children coming in and out of the town that may be on IEPs, which, as we saw previously, that can be, that can have exponential effects on the school budget. And, you know, we also heard some comments with concern to, in the future, having to build another school in Kingston, which I think we don't want to do. So I think because of that, we have to be very cognizant of how many residential properties get put in town, particularly apartments as opposed to single-family homes. Single-family homes, people tend to purchase them, move in, and kind of get their roots in and stay put, and that gives us more of a predictability in terms of, you know, how many residents and how many children we have in town. So for that reason, I would say, do not support this because I think it puts us at risk for seeing bigger increases to our budget that we don't have control over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Guittaboni?
Mark Guittaboni, 15 Old Orchard Lane, Kingston Business Association. When we originally looked at this article, we're looking at, some of you know what Mashpee Commons looks like and with the ability to put a retail site downstairs and have somebody live upstairs. This is usually a, I certainly appreciate the comments of the gentleman that spoke about schools, but I don't know too many people that have school buses pull up to one-bedroom apartments. This is a type of housing that Kingston desperately needs. There are very few single-bedroom units anywhere in Kingston. They rent very quickly and for very good money. And this is an opportunity for businessmen to make money. And when businessmen make money, then the town of Kingston is able to collect some of that money in taxes without kids in school. Many of you know that South Kingston is starting to turn into the used auto mile, and in its process of looking at the type of development that we have in our commercial district, we're certainly looking at something that would be a little bit more attractive. We need to make sure that these properties can be developed economically by the owners that they have into something that's a little bit more appealing. I'd like to just quickly highlight from, to respond to Mr. Bouchard's nice comments, which were very concise about our structure to do zoning bylaw renewal next year. However, this is a four-fifths of a special permit required. That's four out of five people have to vote for that. In the special permit granting authority of both your zoning and planning board, they have the provision to put anything in that decision. Anything to include, if the tenant changes, back to the board. Any type of change specifying type of business, any type of reoccurring review process. So I think that it's safe to do this for this year and plan to amend that next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guittaboni. Ma'am?
Carol Wolsey, 29 Wapping Road. I understand that our wastewater processing plant is maxed out. How would we accommodate this influx of new businesses without $15 million wastewater plant?
Thank you. Ms. Fiore, do you want to address that in the sense of this particular, you know the areas?
Yes, I do. And that would, again, be whatever capacity the existing lot has today, anything that would be put on that property, any change of use would need to be able to fit within that capacity allotment that they have right now. They could not get any more than what they currently have.
Thank you, Ms. Fiore. Mr. Bott?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To echo Mr. Bouchard's point, we are moving forward with zoning changes. The planning board approved a zoning bylaw committee. We have an RFP that we should see by the end of the week, and we'll be working on changing the zoning in the town of Kingston here in the next year with a goal to bring that zoning article back here at town meeting next year. Zoning is difficult. Zoning is complicated, and zoning has unintended consequences at times. As Mr. Bouchard points out, this is one of those things that we don't have a handle on what those unintended consequences are. Mixed-use zoning is great. We're actually looking at and talking about that, is looking at recreating an entire corridor along the Route 3A section to allow those uses that have since moved on. Those uses are obsolete, whether they're block buildings or other type of commercial buildings and things like that. So we do look forward to having mixed-use zoning, but I just can't tell you what the unintended consequences of this are. And I'm very excited to be moving forward with the zoning changes and the committee we put together to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Mr. Fons, 30 seconds.
Brief follow-up. Again, I would just remind you that this notion that there won't be any kids, I believe that that's a false notion. Anybody who can tell you that they can control the types of populations that are occupying residences is not being truthful with you. These could be very well occupied by children. And I would just say, the reason you don't see school buses stopping at one-bedroom apartments is because school buses stop at school bus stops, where the kids walk to. So they don't stop at any property. They stop at bus stops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Bouchard, I think, are you up second?
Yes, second up.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
I'll make it quick. I like children.
And how many is it that you have? All right, so seeing no further debate, I'm going to move the articles. So, did you, are you?
One brief.
All right, I think you're at 30 seconds, too, then.
This is, thank you, Madam Moderator. This is not a radical proposal. I certainly think we want to have comprehensive zoning change. The comprehensive zoning change is envisioning exactly what we want to do with this. I really hope we have comprehensive zoning change in a year, but it may be two years. It may be three years. These things take a long time. Let's allow the businesses, let's help the community, and let's pass this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Berger. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor, seeing no further debate. I'm sorry, ma'am, were you getting up to talk?
Yeah.
All right, then I don't want to rush you.
Deborah Smith, 55 Padbury Lane. We keep hearing the specter of extra children, and we have one answer for that is state occupancy law. Another thing is that there's always going to be children, and no matter whatever residence you have, whatever situation, and if somebody's going to bring in a kid illegally, it's happened in all the towns. You know, there has been a problem where kids are brought in because, A, their parents want them to go to a better school. This happens occasionally. But the specter of, well, if we approve this and if we have this special housing, it doesn't ring right. And I think we're all afraid of a few extra children because we are at capacity. But we're a darn good school system. We have one of the best in the area. Considering what I learned about other people when I was in high school and elementary school here, they've still got that quality of teaching, and I would hope that other towns seek to emulate us. But children, that's really a non-issue. You know, state occupancy laws, whether it's for this or other projects, giving people affordable housing, you can only put so many people or rent to so many people. Of course, somebody having a baby, that's going to happen no matter where you live.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to now move Article 60. This is, again, a two-third vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's count it. So if my tellers can jump up. Mr. Berger, if you're voting, you just need to stand over towards that side so they see you. Just be in one place. All those in favor, say aye. Ms... Ms. Murray?
16.
16, 1-6?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is 14. And Mr. Ruprecht? And Mr. Ruprecht is 14. All those opposed? Cod, nice and high. Ms. Murray?
14.
Ms. Murray is 14. Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is 7. Ms., uh, I mean, Mr. Ruprecht? Mr. Ruprecht is 16. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion does not carry, as it was 44 in favor and 37 no.
Point of order?
Yes?
Do we have a quorum?
Well, it's too late for that vote anyhow, just so you understand. A quorum would be for future votes.
Although it says for 100 for that one, right?
Pardon me?
Does that vote call for 100 quorum?
But the quorum has to be called at the beginning of the motion. Once the motion's in play, you don't know if people have left, because they, whatever reason. So you have to call a quorum at the beginning. Just because of vote doesn't mean people did, might not have voted. Some people abstain. You know what I mean? So, um, but if you want to call for a quorum, we can do that. But Mr. Um, Hollow, do you have a point of order?
Uh, I'd like to move to reconsider this article.
All right. So we have a move to, a motion to reconsider?
Second.
That being seconded. Um, all those, again, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to reconsider, if you want to reconsider an open debate, again, you want to vote yes, and if you want to close debate forever, say no. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So motion does not carry. So we're moving on to Article 61, and is, Ms. Coleman, were you making, were you asking?
No, no.
Okay.
The rest don't require a quorum.
Right. Oh, the rest don't?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
I was just making sure that wasn't.
Yeah. But no, the vote does go, because it wasn't called prior to, but abstentions count. Um, ladies and gentlemen, Article 61, and this is, uh, petition article, street acceptance, Guilfeather Lane and McFarland Drive. Do I have a petitioner? Come down front, sir? Sorry. Thank you for stepping up, by the way.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Your name?
My name is Sean Holt, 43 McFarland Drive in Kingston. I move that the town vote to accept the remaining portion of McFarland Drive and Guilfeather Lane as public ways as shown on a plan of acceptance for McFarland Drive 2 and Guilfeather Lane dated January 12, 2017, prepared by Varanot Consulting, and to authorize the selectmen to accept suitable fees or easements in said ways. Note that the plan of acceptance replaces the originally petition subdivision plan.
In accompanying materials, okay. Sorry, I'm just, we didn't have a motion in writing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm just so weird. Was that previously? It wasn't previously, so it was by easement?
Yeah, it was by easement.
Okay.
I'm just making sure, because my notes.
It does. You're right. Okay. And so just to clarify, people, um, that we were changing that, um, from a two-third vote to a majority vote, because there's no eminent, there's no eminent domain. So, um, having not been read. So, um, that is now going to be a majority vote. So that, um, I hear a second on that?
Second.
That being seconded, um, ladies and gentlemen, planning board had favorable action 500. Board of Selectmen? Not ready. Um, Mr. Holt, do you want to address your, um, motion? No. Mr. Holt's moving us right along. Um, speaks for itself, in other words. Uh, so yes, Mr. Hollow?
Daniel Hollow, 31 Howland Lane. Just curious, what kind of condition the two roads are in?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to go quick.
No.
Uh, just trying to, uh, get what kind of condition the roads are in before, uh, vote on acceptance.
Okay. So you're questioning condition of roads. Does anybody know?
Just curious.
Mr. Bott?
Madam Moderator, the, uh, highway superintendent and I have been working with the developer and his contractor, uh, to get the roads completed. Uh, there are, uh, one minor punch list item, uh, to be addressed. Uh, we're holding $32,800 in a bond to take, deal with those issues. Uh, I've heard from both neighbors who are very fabulously happy with, uh, what's been gone on there. And I heard some neighbors who says, you know, it could be a little better. This could be a little better. Uh, but for the most part, the roads are looking in great shape. We've got a punch list, one punch list item to deal with, and we're holding $32,800 for the bond.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. And I apologize. Mr. Bott did give me the motion. I just put it in front of it instead of behind it. So I did not have it. So I apologize, Mr. Bott. You had given me that motion. Um, Board of Selectmen are now voting favorable, um, three up?
Yep.
Um, so Board of Selectmen is favorable, um, 300. Seeing no further debate, all, um, those in favor of Article 61, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Um, next page. Moving on to Article 62. Uh, sorry, Mr. Berger.
George Berger, 15 Hemlock Street. Move that the Board of Selectmen investigate and report at the 2018 annual town meeting the extension of the Smith Lane, Kingston, a public way to Main Street, Route 3A, and if necessary, to apply for any state aid, grants, easements, or permits required to facilitate the construction of the roadway.
Thank you. Do I have a second? That having been seconded, um, Attorney Berger, you want to address that?
Yes, just briefly. This is, first of all, it's just to ask that the Board of Selectmen investigate the possibility of extending Smith Lane to Route 3A. Anybody who's familiar with that part of town realizes that the intersection now, Smith Lane, ends into Crescent Street. Crescent Street to the left runs in, well, left and right runs into 3A. The one to the left has to be one of the worst intersections in the town of Kingston. If you extend Route, uh, excuse me, if you extend Smith Lane, it would go right through the old Cumberland Farms property, which is currently for sale. So it may be an opportunity to really fix a significant traffic problem. And this is just to ask that the Board of Selectmen investigate that possibility.
Thank you, um, Mr. Berger. I have, Board of Selectmen is favorable 300. Um, sir?
Hi, Kevin Losniak, 14 Kennedy Road. Um, I live right behind that intersection. Kennedy Road intersects with Crescent Street, and I want to reiterate what the petitioner said. That is a very, very tricky intersection. Um, it is very difficult to get off of Crescent Street heading north on 3A either direction. You either, if you, um, take the southern part of Crescent Street, you have to take a very, very sharp, uh, left, virtually U-turn, and then you're always dealing with oncoming traffic. And if you tried to take the northern part of Crescent Street to head north on 3A, um, it's very difficult to see the northbound traffic. So it's just always very, very tricky to get off of that intersection. It would be so much easier if Smith Lane was extended and you could take a very straight, you know, T-shaped left or right turn. So I encourage the town to vote in favor of this motion so that we can get a good sense of the pros and cons of moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Guittaboni?
Mark Guittaboni, 15 Old Orchard Lane. Just like to speak in favor of this. Uh, there is, uh, was a state, uh, initiative to do this years ago. I don't know if it's on the back burner somewhere. There's also property available currently to make this happen. So please support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Guittaboni. Uh, before you, Mr. Hollow, I have Mr. Bouchard?
Sure.
And then Mr. Hollow?
Yeah, this is something we've been talking about on the planning board for quite a while. Tom Bott has, uh, brought this up. Uh, I think if we could just do anything to be ready, uh, this is a, this would be a huge change down there. It'd be a great thing. And maybe the roads going in on Crescent and on both ends could be one way, and the only way out of there is, is through, through a set of lights or something down where it extends through. But we're looking at this for a long time. And I think it's great that if we could just look at this, kind of be ready, and then maybe we could be looking for, try to get some, some help, uh, financially with this. This would be a good thing. We're not talking about any money right now. We're just talking about looking at it. I think we should definitely vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Hollow?
Daniel Hollow, 31 Howland Lane. I, I'm all for looking into this. I just have a question. If there's no money being involved, why is there language being written into about possibly applying for state aid and grants and all this other stuff if all we're doing is doing some simple research? If that language wasn't in it, I'd be all for it. But I have a feeling, again, that if this does pass, that grants will start to get paid, uh, submitted potentially. And then it's gonna be presented to town hall of, hey, we got this grant money and this and that. And the way a lot of the grants work is that they're matching grants. We have to push the money up front and then do, do it. I'm all for the, the notion. I live right off Howland's Lane. Um, I take Crescent Street all the time. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I just think that that language should not be as part of this. Um, and so therefore, I can't support the motion as is written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollow. Mr. Berger, did, were you saying that you wanted to address that?
Yeah, just, yes, Madam Moderator, if I may, just with respect to why that language is in there and why I think the language is in there, is absolutely, this doesn't cost the town any money. If we're a situation where we look into this, we find out that there's a grant available, we want to have the authorization to apply for the grant. We don't want to have to come back or go to a special town meeting. So it just sort of sets the stage. I think everybody agrees this is a great idea. It's not gonna cost the town any money right here. If there's grant money available, and one of the requirements is that the town has to approve applying for the grant, we're now covered. So that's why that language is in there.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Mr. Fons?
Uh, thank you. My only issue is, again, if they're just researching it, I don't understand why it needs to even be voted upon. Are the selectmen not free to just investigate what they want to? So to me, this is more, again, what we're really seeing here is that this is an article to apply for grants.
Mr. Fons, just so you understand, this is a petition article. This is not a town or a Board of Selectmen article. So it's a citizen asking the Board of Selectmen to look into it. So it's kind of, by voting it, we're, they're forcing the Board of Selectmen to look into it and report back to us next year.
I understand that, and thank you for clarifying that. And again, I think it's, I also think that this is potentially a good idea. But my concern is that what is actually involved with this, you know, investigation or research into this? That's what my concern is. Because it seems like they should be able to just pursue whatever they want to pursue without having to have it voted for.
Okay.
So, that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Haas?
John Haas, 96 Summer Street. Move the question, please.
Moving the question. Um, that being seconded, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, moving Article 62. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, moving on to Article 63, petition article, William Gould Way. There'll be no motion on this article. Are you changing that? Oh, you're getting up for 64. Sorry. And I lost my sheet. Um, Article 64 is, um, petition article, full-time town engineer in lieu of peer review. Um, Attorney Berger?
George Berger, 15 Hemlock Street. Move that the Board of Selectmen investigate and report at the 2018 annual town meeting, eliminating the current requirement for peer engineering review, except in extraordinary circumstances, and in lieu of create a full-time appointed position of town engineer who would review projects and make a report to the applicable boards. The position to be partially funded by an increase in related fees to the town of Kingston.
Thank you. Um, do I have a second on that?
Second.
That being seconded, um, Attorney Berger, can you address your, uh, motion, please?
Yes, just briefly. The purpose of this article, now, when you have businesses that are going before the, mainly the planning board and sometimes the zoning board, there's what's called peer review. So the developer comes to town, they have their own expert, which they have to pay for. And then currently under the law, the town has to, has the opportunity to retain another expert to peer review what the developer has done. The developer ends up paying for both. So the developer pays a fee to the town. The town then hires another peer review, an outside peer review engineer. The purpose of this article and the reason that the Kingston Business Association is behind it is because it would allow the town to hire their own, uh, expert and the town expert that would then do this review in most circumstances. That position would be paid for out of the fees that are being paid already by the applicant who's going before the different boards. So it's to help streamline the process and hopefully lower the cost for the developer while still providing an independent expert, uh, who can represent the interests of the town.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Boyer?
Susan Boyer, 249 Main Street, also a member of the planning board. I have a couple of concerns with this. Um, number one, I think to hire an engineer who could cover even half of the review that we might need to do would be an extraordinary feat. Um, they have, would have to have knowledge of traffic, stormwater management, um, grading, e-everything that we send out. That's my first concern. My second concern is, what would we do with a town engineer when we have a serious lull in development as we had two years ago, when we had almost next to nothing coming before the planning board in terms of large development requiring a peer review? What would their role be? We would be paying them to review, engineer what exactly? So those are my two concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Boyer. Um, Mr. Fons?
Joe Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue. Um, I have serious concern with just adding another position to town. This is more, uh, health insurance. This is more retirement benefits. There's a lot of costs involved with bringing on a full-time position into the town. And if I understood correctly, as you said it, right now, the town still has the option to hire who they see fit as peer review, and the developer has to pay for it. What's wrong with the developer paying for it? Why should the taxpayers, taxpayers pay for it instead of the developers, being that the town still has the freedom to choose who they see fit to conduct the peer review? I don't see how we justify bringing on a full-time position when basically the town has its own sovereignty to pick who they want while someone else is paying for it. Let someone else continue to pay for it. Why should the taxpayers foot the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Um, sir, and then I have Ms. McFarland?
Richard Loring, 33 Monstrous Chairman, the Board of Water Commissioners. Uh, I agree completely with what Susan said relative to the expertise and the broad range of knowledge that an engineer would have to have to adequately service the town of Kingston. Uh, currently, we have an engineering firm that we retain strictly to look at, uh, water department requirements. And, uh, to suggest that we're gonna hire an engineer that's gonna have the expertise, the full broad range of engineering requirements is absolutely absurd. And again, just the added cost, just to make it easier for a developer to, to come to town, let's leave it the way it is so that we can hire the expertise that each department or each commission is required to need, and, uh, let the developer pay those costs.
Thank you, Mr. Loring. Uh, Ms. McFarland?
I completely agree with Mr. Loring and Ms. Boyer and Mr. Fons. Um, to bring on, we had Tom O'Brien at our selectmen's meeting talking about, uh, how much it costs to bring on an employee. And we also, I coincidentally had another conversation tonight in this room, uh, including Mr., uh, Treasurer, um, Mr. Stevens. And the average cost to hire a town engineer would be something between 90,000 and over $100,000 to get a good one. And one especially that would have not all, but just some of the expertise that he needs. Add on to that $25,000 to $30,000 in benefits, including health insurance, vacation, sick time, retirement, all of those costs. So you're well over $100,000 for a person that does not have the expertise. Now, I deal with peer review at my job on a daily basis. Um, I work for the town of Hanover in the Conservation Office, and we hire experts all the time. Now, with wetland specialists, you have one that's good with rivers and streams. You have one that's good with something else. You have one that's good with, you know, vernal pools. But you can't find one who has all of that expertise and have, hire them either for the town or for the ablot, because they're way too expensive. So another, another idea is that it's better for the town, absolutely, but it's also better for the developer, because you want somebody who's completely independent. They're, they're not working for the town. They're suggested by the town. The developer gets to choose which one they want. And we've always had excellent consultants doing our engineering work, absolutely without question. And the developer gets the best end of this deal, even though he pays for it, because this person is independent. person is independent. So I urge you not to support this.
Thank you, Ms. McFaulen. Ms. O'Donnell?
I just want to take a look at this from a different viewpoint, being a developer for many years and living and working in this town. This is not saying that this, we're not asking to hire somebody tonight at all. All we're saying is, let's look at the numbers and we should be good at that. That should be number one that we do. Because I know of one small example where someone hired their own stamped civil engineer, $17,000 they paid to design a parking lot, and the town had their consultant, just look at the plan, and it cost over $20,000. I mean, does that make sense? So guess who ultimately pays for it? Who's ever going to come in and do business with that? Because the businessperson has to get their costs back. So my, I think this is a great idea, being a Kingston business member and also being a member of the town, because what would that engineer do when they're not busy looking at somebody coming in? Possibly look around what he can do for the town and looking at the town's roads, looking at the town's drainage, looking at some, all different engineering things that go on. One of the things that the town's really, I think, missing on is buttoning up a lot of the buildings with better, for heating things. There's unlimited amounts. And yes, no one single engineer can do all that, but what you do is you put, just like we do with town council, there's a law firm that has different people that specialize in different areas. And what happens is the town's going to get this for nothing. Right now, who gets it all is all these outside consultants who charge whatever they charge and no one has any control over. So it doesn't make any sense. People generally don't like change, and that's just what we're saying. And we're saying, we don't have to do it tonight, we just have to say, let's take a look at this. This could be a good idea and it could be a win-win for a lot of people, most importantly the town.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Sir, and then Mr. Bouchard. And I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name. Pink shirt, yep, you. I know you're going to say it and I'm going to go, ugh.
Mike Reeves, 14 Clearing Farm Road. You know, I'm listening to this, I look at the cost and I read what's written here and it says to be partially paid for. The implication is it's going to be mostly paid for and that's not the case. And while, you know, I'm in favor of development and I'm in favor of businessmen making money, the engineering plans and those kinds of things are part of the cost of doing business. And, you know, if you, a wise businessman counts the cost before he starts. And so what I'm, I disagree with this. I think this is not a good idea because, number one, you can't have somebody that can cover everything, not even most things. You would have a jack of all trades and a master of none, and it would be very expensive and only partially paid for by fees to the city. So the people who would make out here are the developers who are already probably making a lot of money, so.
Thank you. Mr. Bouchard?
I've been on the planning board, I don't know, 20, 25 years, something like that. And this is, the way, the system we have now has really worked well. I mean, there's, you have a couple of problems here and there and different things, but I like the fact that it's somebody independent, these points have been made, I'm not going to try to reiterate everything. But, you know, there's an old saying that I used to hear a lot, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I wanted to just say that this system we have now works well. Why dive into some unknown, and I would say for some unknown reason, I have no reason to why we would even do this unless, I don't know what the reason would be. The other thing I would like to say is I agree with Mr. Fauntz. Woo-hoo!
Mr. Fauntz, 30 seconds, and then Ms. McFaulen has 30 seconds.
I don't know if I can follow that. I don't want to say something, make them disagree with me and ruin the night, I don't know. Yeah, I just remind folks that we're talking a lot about one number here, which is the cost for the engineers and this and that, but we do have to remember, as I said previously, the cost for retirement benefits and insurance. That is a big fact that needs to be remembered when you bring on full-time positions. But I did have actually a logistical question. Is this considered a resolution?
No.
Can I motion to make it a resolution?
No. It's not a resolution, it wasn't a resolution, it's a motion to have them, again, investigate and report. It's not to take definitive action, it's a petition or asking a citizen to take action.
Okay.
Asking the board of selectmen to investigate and report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. McFaulen, 30 seconds, she's waving. Mr. Berger, Attorney Berger, you. And then I'll go, and then I have Town Clerk Gallagher and then Mr. Haas.
Yeah, just briefly first, I just want to emphasize, this is to investigate. There were a lot of good questions asked tonight, I think those would be addressed. With all due respect to Mr. Bouchard, I practice in front of his board, so I really do mean that, all due respect. I think some people would say, a lot of people would say that this is broken. And this is just to investigate an alternative, I would urge you to vote in favor.
Thank you, Attorney Berger.
My apologies from speaking up here, but trying to keep track. I did just want to make a point that whenever we talk about whether we're talking about investigating or hiring or lifting hiring freezes, every time we decide we're going to hire a new employee, it comes to us as part-time or partially paid by, becomes full-time, the full-time becomes a department, the department becomes a staff. So let's just keep in mind that hiring one person could become additional staffing members, particularly when you're hiring someone in an engineering field that's going to be doing so much and have to cover so many different things, he's going to need support and help. So that's something to keep in mind.
He, he or she, correct? I've heard so many references to he's in this article. Mr. Haas?
Move the question, please.
Oh, thank you. Move the question. I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, moving Article 64. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion does not carry. Are you the final article? Mr. Guittaboni is our final article and that's Article 65.
Point of order, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I wanted to motion to reconsider Article number 57.
Going back to Article 57.
Article 57?
Did you say 57?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Article 57, move to reconsider.
Yes, ma'am.
That being seconded, again, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to reopen Article 57 and re-debate it, then you want to vote yes. If you want to close it and never debate it again, you say no. All those in favor reconsidering an open debate, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. Article 65. Mr. Guittaboni?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Move that the town of Kingston general bylaws be amended as follows. Article 11, general provisions governing officers, boards, and committees. Section 4-111-6, departmental reports to add, quote, "The board of selectmen will present at annual town meeting and include in the annual report a listing of all town-owned real estate to include assessor's map and lot, address, acreage, current assessed value, and town use, or take whatever action relative thereto."
Well, I'm going to strike or take whatever action relative thereto, if you don't mind. Thank you. Second on that? That being seconded, Mr. Guittaboni, would you like to address your motion?
Ladies and gentlemen, this article is put forward to highlight the numerous parcels of real estate at the millions of dollars in assessed value that the town of Kingston currently owns. Many of these parcels are not utilized for anything except occupying parts of people's backyard. They are not necessarily designated for open space or designated for any particular use. Some of them are little slivers of land that are in people's front yards left over from a road relocation. When I was on the Open Space Committee, we identified numerous parcels that could be liquidated to neighbors for the purpose and going back on the tax roll. Our facilities manager, I don't know if he's here tonight, but he is in favor of liquidating these parcels if we can and getting them back on the tax rolls and using that revenue to maintain the facilities we have. Part of the listing initiative to put it out at town meeting and to put it in the annual town report annually is to make sure that everybody is aware that these parcels are in fact owned by the town. Hopefully, somebody will express an interest, approach the town and want to buy them. I think our town treasurer on numerous occasions has had land auctions and would like to move forward and have some of those land auctions go back out there and see if people that are butters to these parcels might be interested in purchasing them and putting them back on the tax rolls. Once again, Kingston Business Association is in favor of this for the initiative to get more tax revenue and not having us all pay that big chunk that we pay now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guittaboni. Seeing no debate, all those, are you speaking? Are you? Board of Selectmen is in support of this, 300. Board of Selectmen is in favorable, 300. Seeing, yep, Mr. Dandero?
The speaker that brought this up...
I'm sorry, what?
The gentleman that brought this up, if I used the word correctly...
You need to actually speak because I'm losing you.
I can't, my, my, I apologize.
That's all right.
Earlier tonight, you said you were the Boy Scouts, then you're KBA. How are you representing this article tonight? Are you a developer? You bring this up continuously. I see no reason for doing this. A lot of these parcels have been around forever and they haven't affected anybody. And if they were worth of any value, I think they would have been taken care of by now. I think it's just going to cost us a lot of money and get us nowhere.
Thank you, Mr. Dandero. I'm assuming Mr. Guittaboni will want to indicate that you're with the Kingston Business Association on this?
Yes, the Kingston Business Association is doing everything they can to support lowering our taxes. As residents here in Kingston, part of that is supporting businesses coming to town. But this particular initiative, as many of you take advantage of the open space or this little parcel that's in your backyard so you don't have to go out and own your own backyard, that's great. And I think we all should have a free backyard and everybody in the room can just pitch in and pay for my backyard to be free. But not all of us, as the previous gentleman speaking, have the privilege of having all of us collectively tonight pay for him to have his backyard.
Mr. Guittaboni, you are not to get personal, that is extremely inappropriate. Mr. Berger?
George Berger, 15 Hemlock Street. Very quickly, first, I think it's significant the board of selectmen are in favor of this, three to nothing. Second, this is simply to identify the parcels that are out there so we all know about it in the annual meeting. We can take a look at it, we can see which ones potentially we should sell, we can use that money for other needed capital improvements. I would urge everyone to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Attorney Berger. Town Clerk Gallagher?
Things are not always as simple as they appear. This is something, as Mr. Dandero had suggested, something that comes up on a continuous basis. It comes up by people that actually own property next to property that's being used for some other purpose. The town does have a list of properties. It's available to anyone that wants it. They can go to the assessor's office, they can go to the treasurer's office, they can go to the board of selectmen's office, and they can say, what properties are in town? The town created a land study use committee and they went through every single piece of property that the town owned and decided what we should sell and what we should keep. The things that we kept were typically, you know, abutted conservation property or were minute little pieces that they offered to residents to buy if they wanted to increase the property size of their properties. But there's other people in town that want to find out these properties because they landlocked another piece of property that they could develop on. And that development could have major, major impact on residents in the town. So if you think that you might not be impacted, you may very well be. There'll be a small piece of parcel that is behind your house that abuts some big piece of parcel that they can get into because they got that little piece of property. This is not as simple as it appears. This is a beginning of, let's put it in the book, let's take the cost that it's going to, what it's going to cost us to print it in the book when it's already available, and then they can say, well, it's listed now, why don't we start looking at, you know, buying these properties? Oh, I see this is for the sale, I think I'd like to get it. It's not as simple. You know, I can appreciate everything, everything that the KBA is doing for the town of Kingston to trying to create this great awareness of business and trying to make things better for business. But I'm telling you right now, the KBA is interested in business, not in the town. And this is reflect, this article alone reflects whether or not you're actually working on our behalf. There was a question tonight whether or not it was going to go move forward or not, and sure enough, it did. So it's not as simple as it appears, folks.
I don't know which was up first.
I believe it was her.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah Altair, 41 Landing Road. And I'd just like to say I agree with Mr. Gallagher. This information is already available and I don't see why we should spend any more money putting together a special list and publishing it.
Thank you, Mrs. Altair. Mr. Fauntz?
I also agree with Mr. Gallagher. I was just trying to kind of understand. So the information's already available, this is seeking to have it put into a list and presented at town meeting. Is there any type of plan as to what's done after that or is it just kind of, hey, this is what we have and that's it?
Mr. Guittaboni, do you want to address that in regard to what's the intent of the Kingston Business Association with the list?
Well, again, when people look at developing land, and if you want to put little parcels in their way to stop development, then all you're going to do is not allow people to come to town and build something, whether it's on a commercial highway or whether it's around the corner. If you don't have people able to build on the property you have and create tax revenue for your taxpayers, then you can all write a bigger check at the end of the day. All we're trying to do...
But what's the answer to the question?
Yes. So the answer is, if these parcels stop development, and that's the goal of this town, then don't be surprised if you don't have development, business development that produces taxes without kids in school. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, if I may, that didn't even...
Thank you, Mr. Guittaboni. I'm back to you, Mr. Fauntz.
That didn't even remotely answer the question.
Well, that's your answer. I mean, that is his answer, which is clearly to develop property. That is what I do from that answer, so move on from that.
Okay.
To develop property, get the list of property and develop it. That was his answer. So either, do you have anything further?
So the purpose of this is to present the information at town meeting to then develop on the land? That doesn't make sense to me.
Yep, that was his answer. So he answered it, you might not like it, you might not understand it, but he answered it.
Oh, no, no, I have no, I have no position liking it.
Move on, Mr. Fauntz.
I don't understand it because it doesn't make sense. So I can't like or dislike it if it doesn't make any sense.
I can't make somebody make sense. Move on.
That's for sure.
Ms. McFaulen, were you, or Ms. Fury, I'm sorry, it was Ms. Fury. And obviously, Mr. Guittaboni, I certainly didn't mean that as an insult or a personal attack, I just meant people answer questions in their way. Go ahead, Ms. Fury.
I'd like to ask through you, Madam Moderator, if possibly we could get what the process is from legal counsel, because I believe that any land that is to be sold needs to come to town meeting for approval and after that, it's auctioned off.
Right, but one second. This article is to just investigate, to have the board of selectmen present a list to the town next year? I agree. That's the simplified on it. What the question is, is what will happen with the list? So obviously, there's a process to sell property. So town council, explain the process to sell property.
There is a process to... Can you hear me now?
No.
There is a process to sell property and it depends how the town acquired it. So if you acquired it through tax, there's a tax title process. If it's acquired through other means, you would have to go through town meeting, declare it surplus, follow procurement, it's a lengthy process in either event.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Smith?
I'm good.
You're good? Sir?
Erin Eaton?
Yeah.
Erin Eaton, 14 Kennedy Road. Just to extend a little bit what Mr. Gallagher said, my fear with that would be if it's the little guy against the developer, it's going to be awful hard for the little guy to win. And so I would just think as a part of fairness, if I was a towns person, I wouldn't want to go back up against a developer. So just something to think about.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, then Ms. McFaulin.
You know, I'm just, I'm going to pass. It's simple. It's as simple as you can say.
Ms. McFaulin? Ms. McFaulin, you, not your sister? Okay. Then we end with Mr. Guittaboni, and you're on a limit.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is all to provide information to this body and to the town in general. That's all. You're providing a list. Nobody's asking anybody to do anything about buying or selling or doing anything else. We're just asking that you publish the list with the million-dollar, multi-billion-dollar price tag of the property this town holds as town property.
Thank you, Mr. Guittaboni. Up, Mr. Hallow.
Daniel Hallow, 31 Howland Lane. I'd like to move the question, please.
I was just going to say, I'm sorry. That was a hollow who moved the question?
Even I have a moment or two.
Oh, you did definitely add some longevity to the night. All right, so we haven't moved the question. Is that seconded? I was going to say, Cortland, you want to second that? All those in the favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed?
No, just kidding.
Motion carries. Uh-huh, yeah. Now, moving Article 65, which is our last article of the evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Point of order, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider Article number 64, please.
I have a, so, Mr. Hallow, reconsidered, which we almost don't need to do if we're going to end, but we'll do it. I have a second on that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to reopen the debate, then say yes on a motion to reconsider. All those that want to end debate, and I mean permanently, say no. All those in favor of motion to reconsider, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry. I have a motion to adjourn sin day. That being seconded. And I want to just take one second, ladies and gentlemen, to thank all the town meeting workers. I want to thank the police. Thank you, Sergeant Wells, or is that lieutenant? No, I don't sound it. I want to thank Cott, who has been so wonderful and phenomenal for our meeting. So with that all said, and I have a second, all those in favor of adjourning sin day, which means forever, no, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously at 9:22 PM. That's a record. We're going to have to ask Katie come over.